Good evening, and thank you for attending the City Council meeting for February, Monday, February 5th, 2024. We will begin with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Bieber Dorf. Maher. Roberts. Stroman. Pettigrew. Seacrest. Lehman. Hamm. Evans. Roseland. We have a quorum.
Uh, thank you. Uh, next we'll have an invocation by Pastor Randy Phipps. If you'll please rise if you're willing, and then we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
To exercise our freedoms of Americans, our privileges of South Dakotans and Rapid Cityans. Thank you for this City Council, for staff, administrative. You don't hear that often enough. Thank you. It's deeply appreciated. The authority that you have been given, we all have opinions, but you have authority to act on the will of the people. I'm going to pray you have discernment, obedience, to do the hard things, but also to do the right things that would benefit the majority of the people and the things that the Lord would be pleased with. So, Lord, thank you tonight for blessing on our city. Thank you that we would have a, an anticipation, an expectation. As South Dakota says, under God, the people rule, but in Rapid City, we also, Lord God, have great leaders. Thank you for these men and women gathered here tonight as a Rapid City Common Council. We know the agenda is loaded with lots of decisions, lots of options. I pray for wisdom in every decision, that they would be able to have discernment between right and wrong, good and evil, and the better of two best, that they would make wise decisions that would be a blessing to each of us today, tomorrow, the years and generations to come. We ask for your will to be done. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, next we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Got a motion by Roberts, second by Lehman to adopt. All in favor? Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. Uh, next we'll move on to general public comment, a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the City Council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I do have one general, uh, public comment, and that is Adrian Epp. And Mr. Epp, as a reminder, you have three minutes for your public comment, and we have your timer up on the monitors there.
All right. Thank you. Um, I think as a city, we need to, um, look at diversifying our transportation options. Having pretty much only, uh, personal automobile, personal automobiles as, as the only way to get around in the city, um, is detrimental to our economy and to the well-being of our, of the citizens here. Um, I, you should understand that the more, um, more that you try to scale up car dependency, the worse it gets, the worse that congestion gets, the wider you have to make the roads, uh, the farther every, everything has to be spaced apart, more parking lots you need. The more that you make something convenient to drive through, the let, to drive to, the less, um, it's worth driving to, the worse it is worth going to. It's not, um, a good situation to have. And so, we really need to look at properly funding our public transportation. It's woefully under, under, uh, uh, underfunded. Um, and it's more than just accommodating other forms of transportation. It's making other forms of transportation more appealing. Um, because then you won't have these congestion issues that we have. You won't be needing to make senseless road expansions. Um, I, I won't ever let that subject die, just so you know. Um, you really should be working at making, uh, walking better, cycling easier, and you need to make your public transportation run more often, um, have more routes and, and all of that. And you can start even without adding any more, um, staff to the public transportation. Just give your buses signal priority. Make it so that they never have to wait at a red light. They shouldn't anyway. It's dumb that they do. You should make your public transportation very appealing, and this is a simple way to make it more efficient, more frequent. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, that takes us to the end of the general public comment. I do have a point of personal privilege request by Councilman Evans, which I will grant. So, Mr. Evans, whoop, you want to chime back in? You have the floor.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to congratulate the Black Hills Workshop and Flutter Productions for their unbelievable, uh, fashion-able, fashionable presentation that they did a week ago. I don't know if you people have ever been to it, have ever seen it, but it is truly one of the greatest things that Rapid City does, and Heather Pickering is something of a genius in the way she puts together a fashion show with all of the designs created by the people at the workshop, and they modeled them. We have a runway. It's just like Fashion Week, and the place was packed out at the Jolly Lane Greenhouse. There was lighting, there was music, and these people came down the aisle with the biggest grins on their face. You know, they don't have the easiest lives in all cases, well, in any of the cases, if you're at the workshop, so there are challenges. But the joy that was radiating from their faces as the people cheered and applauded and looked at them, and you could see there was so much good generated in that couple of hours that, you know, most of us maybe don't create that much joy in our entire lives. So I just want to really congratulate Heather Pickering for that fabulous job, and she's been doing it for several years. And if you've never seen this, make, make time to go see it next year because this is something Rapid City can be really, really proud of. In fact, I was sitting next to a Broadway star who was back home visiting, and he said, "This should be a Netflix special." And I agree. It's truly incredible. So maybe you'll get to see it next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, uh, we will begin non-public hearing items one through 50, and we'll open public comment for items one through 49. I do have a handful of speaker request forms for item 16. Uh, and I believe that's going to be pulled here momentarily, but we'll give you an opportunity to share up to three minutes at the podium. We'll begin with Dan Malali.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Dan Malali. I live out, uh, Rapid Valley, near the Apple Valley Development, and several of us residents out there are concerned about a letter from, uh, Tuie Design Group to the City Council for a variance to eliminate sidewalks from that development. It's about, um, 420 homes, I believe, and I'm not saying I'm definitely opposed to the variance. I think we don't under, there's several of us that don't understand it. We would like to have it pulled from consent. And, um, some, some of the questions we have, it, does this mean the ver, the sidewalks will not be built at a certain stage, or does it mean that requirement will be completely eliminated? And I also don't understand the procedure, why this is coming before the City Council, but, uh, it is, so that's basically my opinion to this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next Sheri Nutter.
Thank you, Mayor Salomon and City Council. I just echo the same sentiments as, uh, my neighbor Dan Malali. I live on 6600 Longview Road, and the community in our neighborhood, uh, has been very involved in all of the meetings regarding Apple Valley from the start. So it's been a couple of years in the making, and it's been our understanding, um, that sidewalks were always going to be included in this development. This development is, um, going to be the highest urban density zoning, or it has been approved to be the highest urban density zoning in the city, and it's going to be out in the county, but I know that's within your guys' three-mile jurisdiction for plating. I'm not sure where sidewalks fall in that jurisdiction, um, to Dan's point, but we just really want to understand this variance. Um, the letter that is out there states that the sidewalks would be placed on the builder's responsibility, which it's my understanding that that becomes the homeowner's cost and homeowner's responsibility because it's built into the package price. This is an affordable housing development, so there's a question for all of us on what does that cost then, the homeowner? Um, is that an additional cost? There's a TIF that's been given for infrastructure. There's state funds that have been given to these developers for this development, and so we're thinking hopefully money isn't the reason, um, especially for affordable housing residents. Um, 400 and some homes is a lot of homes in that area, and so for safety of children and pedestrians and everyone else, we really believe that sidewalks are important, and hopefully we just are misunderstanding this variance. The letter talks about putting it on the builder, um, but as it reads on your agenda, it says that it's going to actually remove it as a requirement for Apple Valley subdivision. So that's where our disconnect is coming from, and we just really appreciate your guys' further consideration.
Thank you. Next, Jim Hayward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Uh, I live, uh, Jim Hayward, I live about a quarter mile from this Apple Valley area, and, uh, echoing the same sentiments as, uh, Dan and Sheri, is what the requirements are, not understanding exactly what this variance is going to mean in the end. So I, I'm another one that would request, uh, pulling for, for further discussion and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next Timothy Trueblood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I think Sheri took all of the wind out of my sails, quite honestly. We, we do need clarification, uh, and just as a postscript, uh, my name is Timothy Trueblood. I live on, uh, Anderson Road, 3955 Anderson Road, which is midway between Longview and 44. So we're right across the street from Apple Valley, uh, subdivision, and we watch and, um, observe the progress they're making, which appears to be quite promising. However, uh, as Sheri raised a question, or several questions, we do need some clarification on this variance that is currently being, uh, put forth to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the final speaker is Marie Trueblood. Very well. And with that, that'll take us to the end of the public comment period, and we will move on to consent items one through 49. Would the council like to remove any items for separate consideration? We'll go to Councilman Roberts.
I'll remove item 16.
Item 16 is pulled. Any other items from the council? With that, I will entertain a motion to approve consent items one through 49 with the exception of item 16. Got a motion by Lehman, second by Roseland. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16, approval request from Ryan White of Tuie Design Group for a variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk at the Apple Valley subdivision, Rapid City, per municipal code 16.16.050A, and with that, we'll go to Counselor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask a question to either our Community Development Director or Public Works Director, whoever wants to answer these questions. It looks like it's going to be Mr. Tech.
Yes. Director, Director Tech, you have the floor. Or go ahead and ask your question, but yeah, letting him know.
I might want to ask my question first. Uh, thank you. Director Tech, uh, could you just answer these people's questions on this variance? I think it's very simple, and there's a lot of misunderstanding here, so.
Yeah, that's a great, uh, segue into my remarks, I believe. So, there is a disconnect in our ordinance, um, versus, um, what happens in city limits versus what happens outside of city limits. Uh, the city's current practice within city limits is it's the property owner or the homeowner's responsibility to install the sidewalk at the time of a building permit poll. Uh, we have found certainly that when the developer goes in and installs all the sidewalks before any construction occurs in the development, half the sidewalks get torn up, and they have to be replaced. Uh, so the, the request from Tuie Design Group is to defer the installation of the sidewalk from the time, uh, that the developer puts them in to, to the homeowner's responsibility. Either way, the homeowner pays for those sidewalks because the developer includes the price of the sidewalk in the price of the lots that they sell. Uh, so in effect, it's probably cheaper for the homeowner or the building permit puller to install the sidewalk because they're only doing it once. They don't have to tear it out, uh, to put a driveway in, or if it gets broken during construction to, to replace it. So, uh, that's the theory behind sidewalks.
Thank you, and I think that was a very simple explanation. Is there any questions from anybody that, Dan, you look like you're chomping at your bit, at the bit. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Tech, and that, that's comforting to hear that. However, I, what's the enforcement mechanism for those sidewalks being put in if the, there's a variance on the plan?
I can answer that, if you don't mind. I mean, that's very simple, too, Dan. You should have just called me, and I could have actually taken care of all this for you. So, to allow a, a building permit, okay, or at the very end, a occupancy permit, they can't get an occupancy permit to move into that home until all the conditions are met. So if they don't put sidewalks in, they can't move into their new home. It's very simple.
I'll, I'll take your word for it. Thank you. Um, by, by the way, we did reach out to county and city planning, so we did a little bit of work on this, but.
Well, I know you got my phone number, Dan. You could have just called me.
Well, okay.
All right.
Next time.
Uh, next we'll go to council. Are you done, Mr. Edwards? Okay. Next we'll go to Counselor Stroman.
Um, I just have a question. I don't know what the size of these lots are. Um, do we have that information of what the lot, lot length is that they would be talking about putting in a sidewalk, and how much that would cost? Do we, do we know that? How much we're, we would be projected to be putting onto the homeowners for that? John, you have all the answers. Can I ask you?
Do you mind if I answer?
Uh, fine with that. Go ahead. Let's just have a good, good old-fashioned discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, they're really not putting the cost onto the homeowners because the cost of the lot's going to be subtracted from whatever that cost of that sidewalk is going to be. So, you know, whether the developer put in the sidewalk or the builder puts in the sidewalk, ultimately, the consumer is paying for the sidewalk. They're not getting the lot for free. They're not getting the sidewalk for free. They're not getting, ultimately, in the end, whatever the cost of that is, the consumer is paying for it.
Could, could I ask, um, Ms. Fisher if she has anything on that?
Absolutely. Director Fisher?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I think that, um, Councilman Roberts is correct in the cost of the infrastructure, whether it's done by the developer or the future builder. It will go to the buyer of the home once it's constructed, regardless of who's putting in that improvement. I think that the one thing, and of course, I'm a planner, not an engineer, so I'm, I always look for that detail, to make it very clear, the reason why the city doesn't require sidewalks be constructed when you're plating inside the city limits, and we used to, for years we did, but the home builders buy the lot from the developer, the sidewalks are in, they then build the homes, and while they're driving over the sidewalk to dig the foundation and build the homes, in many instances, the sidewalks break down. And then there's an added expense, as Director Tech noted. Now the future homeowner is paying for the original cost of the sidewalk and for the, uh, repair cost of the sidewalk. So we appreciate when we can coordinate with the county, because remember, we don't issue the building permits for this property. This is outside the city limits. We have plating jurisdiction, but we coordinate with Pennington County on, uh, what conditions are set aside that would collate with the building permit. The good news is, is that we all use the same building permit software system known as Tracket. We'll put a note in Tracket that identifies that an exception was granted to defer the installation of sidewalk to the building permit, uh, portion of the project. When the county goes to pull up that building permit, they'll see that note, and then they can pursue the installation of the sidewalk and issuance of that building permit. So there is some solid communication in place to ensure that whatever it is council does tonight is relayed to the county.
Thank you. I yield. Any other questions or comments? Um, we'll have to get a counselor, counselor to chime in and maybe reach out to you. Lindsay Seacrest, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. I just had a question for Director Fisher, if I could. I just would like to clarify on the variance. Is there, is there any way that you could see this going to the county and they grant a variance for the sidewalk installation of this area, or that would be something that they would then decide upon, or that would have to be a further discussion? And Director Tech, go ahead.
All right, Director Tech.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor. That's a great question. The, um, the county does require in this zoning district that sidewalks are installed, so, um, with this level of density, sidewalks are part of the, the county's requirement.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that. Appreciate it.
And next we'll go to Counselor Hamm.
Uh, Ms. Nutter, you can, uh, use my time to answer the question. You had to ask your question.
So, um, I just had a couple of questions regarding the item, and it's great to hear what you guys are relaying, and we probably should have just made a phone call, Mr. Roberts, um, but we just actually learned about it today. So the urgency was to come to the meeting and, and be here and hear it in person. Um, I'm a Realtor in the area, and I have worked with other developers on other developments, and it's my understanding from other developers that even though it's customary for sidewalks to be done later with the builder, that the sidewalk still stays in the engineering plans as a space holder or a placeholder, whatever you want to call it, to make sure that that sidewalk is planned for and that it doesn't get missed. And that's coming from a developer that I've done a lot of work with and, um, has conveyed to me. So my question would be, why do we need the variance? He didn't think a variance was even needed. Um, why do we need the variance if the sidewalks are going to happen anyway? Can't they just stay in the engineering plans as a placeholder to make sure everyone knows and there's no gray area that these aren't going to be required? And then the second question would be on the verbiage of the item. Again, the letter states it's going to be put off onto the builder. It doesn't say in the letter. It's still going to be a requirement, even though you guys are relaying that. The item, as it reads on your agenda, says it will not be a requirement of the subdivision, not of the developer, to be done later by the builder. So the verbiage is a little bit, um, maybe misleading, or I don't know if there's a way to tighten that verbiage up, I guess, would be my question.
And, uh, Ms. Fisher, would you like to respond to that, please?
Yeah, if I could. Uh, thank you. That is an excellent question, and it is confusing. So, right now, because this property is in the city's three-mile plating jurisdiction, we don't look at the zoning, and which is what Director Tech, uh, alluded to a little bit ago. Um, that's the county issue when they go to get the building permit. We only look at this for the sake of, does it meet all of the infrastructure design criteria requirement set forth by, going to use the acronym, um, IDCM. So, in this case, curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water sewer, pavement are always going to be required. When you're in the city limit, where we have control of those building permits, by ordinance, we defer the sidewalk until a building permit. But because we don't have control over the building permits in the county, our regulations say sidewalks for property being platted in the three-mile must be built as a part of the infrastructure required for the subdivision, again, the curb, gutter, sidewalk, streetlight conduit, water sewer, pavement. Um, and in essence, for them to defer it to match the regulations that we have in place for the city, it's required that they submit the variance. The wording on the variance is we don't, we're asking that we not provide sidewalk as a part of the subdivision. They're not indicating, and they are acknowledging in their written statement, they will bring the sidewalks forward as a part of the building permit. So again, everything's lined up with, out in the three-mile, sidewalks are required. Within the city limits, they're not until building permit. It's just aligning the two regulations, and unfortunately, this is the process they have to go through.
Okay. Well, that does help. Um, my final question would be, if it is included in, as infrastructure, and I know this is not a county meeting, it's a city meeting, because we're in that kind of quasi-area where some of it is approved by the city and some of it is under the county's jurisdiction, knowing that, um, there is a TIF, and those TIF funds are going to the developer for infrastructure, does that mean the developer gets money for the sidewalks, but then the homeowner actually ends up paying for it?
It looks like Director Tech would like to weigh in on that question.
I did take a look. I received an email earlier today about this, uh, subject. I did look. at the county's TIF. There is no mention in their improvements there about sidewalks. So, they are not receiving money for the sidewalks through the tax increment financing district that the county put in place.
Okay. I saw something in the tip that said future sidewalks among a list of other items, so that's where I was coming from, from that. And I think it was page six, maybe, but I would need to pull it up.
Yeah, we're going to go to Counselor Roberts now.
I just want to clarify that about the TIF real quick, that whatever their project plan is on this TIF, and whatever items have been allocated for the TIF, if they're not put in, the TIF won't release any money for items that aren't paid for. You have to have a direct bill for the item that is in the TIF before it will be paid for out of the TIF funds. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just for clarification, Mr. Hamm gave Ms. Nutter his time, so that's where, that's why she got that additional time. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion approved by Roberts, second by Hamm. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That will take us to the end of the consent item, agenda, and now we will move on to non-consent items. Item 50, and we will open public comment for item 50. I do not have any speaker request forms, so we will close public comment for that item. And we'll read it in. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number 6599, an ordinance to revise the renewal date of sewer-water entrenching licenses by amending section 13.24.040b of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Got a motion by Roberts to approve, a second by Seacrest. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll take us to the beginning of the public hearing items, and we will open public hearing comments for items 51 through 53. I do not have any speaker request forms, so we will close public hearings for items 51 through 53, and move to consent, public hearing items 51 through 53. Would the council like to make a motion to approve all three, or pull any items? Got a motion by Roberts, second by Lehman to approve items 51 through 53. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar, and now we will move on to the bill list, item 54. And with that, we will go to Finance Director Daniel Ainsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The total bills for tonight are $11,329,220.54.
Got a motion by Roberts to approve, and a second by Strowman. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Lehman, a second by Strowman to adjourn. All in favor? Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.